Um, okay, will you, okay. Good evening and welcome to the planning board meeting for Tuesday, January 26, 2021. The time is now 7:00 PM. The meeting is available on our cable access and for remote participation, video conferencing and screen sharing. First item on the agenda, 7:00 PM, public hearing continued, Cooperstown Road Realty Trust. I believe we have a letter from Andrews.
Nope.
Could we refresh the board about the continuing of this?
So.
Application versus the just withdrawal without prejudice and then refiling?
Yeah. So as you know, this, this application actually was submitted back in February 19th of 2020. We've gotten a number of extensions. We issued a comment letter early on. The comments have not been responded to yet. We have seen some progress recently where they, you know, I witnessed some soil testing for the stormwater management design. The applicant, you know, I still haven't gotten a new plan set. So it's really that first plan set we got back in, you know, 2020 in February. So there's not been any revisions for the drawings or responses to the comment letter that I issued since then. The applicant, I think there's some, you know, internal issues with how the applicant proceeding.
He's on my.
Tonight's indication is going to be on, but I don't see her. The engineer is here, Jude. And so I asked Jude, because they didn't have anything for tonight's meeting, to give us an extension on the timeline to the end of February. And that's what they did. And he's requesting a continuation.
So I'm not sure which meeting we had where we said it was going to be extended for this period of time and if we didn't see progress that we were going to have them withdraw and, you know, re-advertise, that Butters are hanging on.
Yeah, I think that was the last meeting we had.
Okay.
We were looking for them to show some progress and the progress that they had was, we did soil testing. It's been, I think, a month since our last, maybe two weeks.
Since they've been in, it's been a month.
A month.
Yeah. And so I haven't, haven't gotten anything. I did, did ask the applicant if they're, they're not intending to submit something that they give us a withdrawal letter with a request to waive the application fees for substantially equivalent. So I haven't gotten that.
I mean, it's, it's getting to the point where the Butters are kind of, they've been, it's been advertised, we've continued, they're still waiting for progress, they have to block this time off. So, Les?
Yeah, I think, I think the board, you know, I mean, I can't speak for the rest of the board, but it's just a situation where things aren't ready on their side, you know, we, we can't just hold the queue and continue this along. I don't know. Mike?
I think we were pretty firm last, one of those meetings before.
One of them, yeah.
We, we were looking for something concrete of what's going on. So, you know, they dig a couple holes, it's not enough in my opinion. It's the way I feel. We discussed this more than once, I think. So.
Yeah.
Mike?
Therefore, comma? We discussed it before.
Yeah.
And we did request a response.
Yeah. Because I think we've got more continuance than meetings on the agenda.
Yeah, well, we're keeping it on Bill's plate, on our plate. And there's not much progress.
Yeah.
Aaron?
That's what we had talked about last, if there wasn't any progress, substantial progress, that we would not give an extension.
Jake? Yes?
Do we have a request for?
Can you hear us? Or we can't hear you, if you're talking. He just stayed.
Yeah, there you go.
There you go.
That was quicker. Yeah, I agree with what was said.
Okay. Jude, did you want to?
What was that?
For Jude, as far as he's concerned, did you want to say anything?
No, I just go along with what was said. I don't want to push forward my feelings.
Okay, thank you. And then Jude, sorry.
Yes. This is a situation where, again, I, I inherited this and there was some problems and communication problems between the client and my predecessor that had been doing this, this project. The last, I was at a couple of meetings before where you guys said we need to show some progress or withdraw. So we did do some soil testing, we did do a bunch of drainage calculations. And I came in the last meeting or the meeting before that and showed the progress that I had done and walked away with kind of a checklist of what the board wanted, what they wanted to see. Unfortunately, since that meeting, I have not been able to touch this because T. Andrews is severely short-staffed right now. I went from about eight people and it's not, anyone's problem but ours. But with COVID and we had someone retire, we went from eight project engineers to two, me and a junior engineer. So I'm trying to do everything and juggle things and I usually don't operate this way, but whatever fire is burning, the largest. So like I told Bill yesterday and Meg, that I haven't had a chance to, to touch this project and it's probably second on my list and is moving up. But I do understand the board's frustration and the client, you can be assured the client is very frustrated with, with what I've inherited and what I'm trying to, to get accomplished out there. But the fact remains is I just simply haven't been, I've been doing 60, 70-hour weeks and I just can't, I don't have time to get to it at this point. It is, like I said, it's moving up the queue, but, you know, I understand the board's frustration. It has been a year and it is kind of ridiculous at this point. So, you know, I'm at the mercy of the board and whatever the board wishes to do, you know, I don't have a choice but to follow, but that's my story and I'm sticking to it.
Thank you very much.
I totally understand. And maybe it might be best to withdraw right now, give yourself, you guys some time to regroup.
Well, I mean, I wouldn't, I, I was expecting to see the applicant here tonight.
That too.
I, I would suggest that, you know, we, we table this to 7:59 perhaps and let, give Jude an opportunity to consult with his client.
Okay.
And then would he need to submit that letter in writing?
Tomorrow.
Okay, okay. All right. So did you hear what Bill needs in the letter for the withdrawal request? Substantially equivalent application for the refiling and the waiver of the, which fees? Just the?
Basically, we'll, we'll retain the fees until they request it back or, you know, if we return the fees, obviously, we're going to have to get another application.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's going to be our, we have.
Okay.
So they'll just keep kind of like on file.
We would hold on to it.
Yeah, in the wings, yeah.
Regroup and stuff and then come back when, like you guys have more personnel and other type things, because right now it's just going to keep on.
Okay. So let's table this till 7:59, Jude, and if you can get an answer for us. If you don't come back, we'll just make a decision.
That's, that's fine. I'll try.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
So do we need a motion to postpone it to 7:59?
Yeah.
Make a motion to continue while we're carrying for Cooperstown Road Realty Trust to 7:59.
Mike Swicker made the motion.
Second.
Second by Mike Greco, Les Stevens.
Les Stevens, aye.
Mike aye.
Aaron aye.
Socrate aye.
Mike Swicker aye.
Jake.
Jake Scholzberg aye.
Thank you.
Note that Ernie's absent.
I think so.
Okay. Oh, we got a minute here.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could do stuff. All right.
Yeah. As a matter of fact, while Jude's here, we could take discussion item.
P A N R?
Two.
Two.
One address for estates. So I don't know if everybody's had a chance to look at photos that we, that I had sent out, but we'll, I'll get them up there. Les, Les drove by and saw the condition of, of the site and you guys, Jude can also
I saw it with my own eyeballs today.
Did you?
Pulled the smell.
Okay. So, so after Les sent an email, I went up there and took some photos on January 15th. And there was a clear, you know, tracking of dirt and mud off the site going down Douglas Hill Way. And then as we go into the site, you'll see it does in fact get worse the further into the site you go. I'll scroll down.
Yeah, that's it.
So, I mean, this is in the roadway. You know, I, I've been doing this a long time. I've never seen a project like this, this building. They are doing some kind of stock filing of stones on one of the lots and they're trucking materials all around the site. You know, we do have two occupancy permits at, at this site. There's two people that are living out there. We, these are some of the building pads. So you'll notice they, they come in off, off of the dirt where the building lots are with heavy equipment. And in one of these photos, you'll see, let me get through it. You'll see that there is some degradation of the pavement. So this photo, for example, these, these two here, you'll see over in this area, there is some cracking going further into the binder. We had some cracking along the edge and we had them, you know, seal it up because, you know, we, we do have a little wider binder course than, than on the top course. So I, I wasn't as concerned about this stuff over here, but this stuff is creeping into the actual roadway and that could be problematic. So, so I want to point out, we don't have surety for that, okay? We've released all the lots in the project and we don't have surety for, to cover that. Our surety goes from there, assuming that's good and maintained in good condition. And, you know, there's a different spot with the same issue with the cracking because they're driving off the edge of the road.
It's bad sub, it's not compacted.
And, you know, so, so it's just, and this is, this is off-site, this stuff here.
Yeah, that's going up the hill.
It's just in really poor shape. So the building commissioner went up there today and I asked him if he could take some photos. So I do have a couple extra photos. They did erect some silt fence around the site. This is today. So these photos are showing silt, silt fence around the perimeter of the site. They put in some silt sacks in the catch basins, but I want to call out the, the amount of sediment that's around these things. And it's just indicative of what's going on up there. Again, that, that showing silt fence, you can barely see it, but it's there. And again, this is the condition of the roadway.
It's a mess.
Still very poor. And these three last photos were submitted from Bob Pace yesterday. In addition to that, the amount of clearing they had done triggers the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System program for construction general permit. I did indicate that to Bob when I sent my email out to him. And he had Jude get out there right away and actually file the NOI and that's what this is. So they have a stormwater pollution prevention plan on file with the EPA now, which is good. And lastly, I wanted to point out, this is what we have for the building lots. The ones in red have occupancy permits, the ones in green have been released from the covenant and the ones that are yellow have building permits that are open. So there are a number of lots that the board could rescind the approval of the release for those lots if they wanted. But, you know, I, I always think it's not a bad idea to have a little extra, you know, leverage with, with the contractor. Because, you know, I did go out on site and I spoke with some of the guys that were on site and they had no regard for the condition of the, of the road.
You can tell.
And I'll say that, they had no regard.
So can we ask, can I ask you, Bill? What, what is the systemic problem that this keeps getting washed, you know, with dirt? And is it because they, it's overrunning the curbing and, I mean, is it just multiple issues because they're dropping material as they, I mean, what's, what's going on?
Well, I've been on sites similar to this where a contractor will put down some sacrificial, sacrificial wood or something to drive on at these points where they go off the road. And they'll, they'll localize it to one location. Looks like a free-for-all, you know, they're kind of all over the place. That's number one. Number two, there's no, you know, they've got plenty of stone on site, as you saw. They could create a stone tracking pad to shake off, shake off that, that loose material that gets caught in the, the construction vehicles. They're, they're not doing that. It's just good construction protocol.
Well, I know when we release the lots that we assume and we, we demand, you know, best trade practice, you know, on the, on the roads. They're just not abiding by the goodwill that we gave them in releasing these lots. And I feel at this point, you know, it might be good to have some leverage to rescind a couple lots. I don't know if anybody feels that way, but I'm feeling this is kind of a, an SS. You know, I don't want to say what the words are, but it's kind of not very good trade practice.
The, I, I could, in a way, kind of see this coming.
Yeah.
But we went in good faith and honestly, it didn't work. How many lots can we rescind?
Four.
Four.
Five.
Right.
Take them all, take the four, take the four, if we can.
The green, the green ones that haven't been issued building permits.
Right.
I would, I mean, it's, it's becoming, I mean, I've been around construction too my whole life. It's a joke.
Right. It's offensive, actually.
So Jake?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm all in favor of resetting whatever we can for applications with permits over there. I've been on this board for most three years and this whole project has been on the front of our ass since day one. And it is kind of getting irritating and we could, could really stand up for the board and the town's people.
Right, right. We acted in good faith and I don't think it's being reciprocated and so.
I mean, I also think the risk is, you know, to the town is, to what Bill's highlighted is, is if there's additional problems with the road, you know, we've got nothing.
It's going to reflect back on us.
No, we've got nothing to claw into.
And I'm going to say this too, we're coming in that seasonal way, it's starting to hit the frost in and out. And like you said, we run in at a older place, it's going to undermine everything that we tried to do. So that down the road when the town owns it, it's all going to be torn up on its knees. So it's useless.
Let's do it.
All sites always have a general entrance area where, especially if you run a big aim, it goes in and out at one spot. Then you can walk it around on a job site, but you don't want to tear up everything that's been done.
What's the mechanism, Bill?
And I don't, I don't recall that we released all of them at once.
We did, under good.
Okay. And we also have to have surety related to the, the binder that's going on the top.
Well, that could be the logic behind the rescission is, you know, as you can see, they've damaged some of the binder course of pavement, which we don't have surety for. So, you know.
It's, it's, it's that, but the idea is, is you said it exactly, is people live in there.
Yeah.
A lot of your sites, once they have people living there, they bring up the street sweeper.
Oh, yeah.
You have to get steer with a scraper bucket, you get the road cleaned up a bit for the people that live in there, they're not going through a mud bath every time that's raining out. It's just.
And usually, like, like with other projects, they, they phase it in as they're going in. So I'm surprised that they're pretty well check aboard with what they're doing with building permits. So I'm surprised that, you know, usually they would have done like, you know, lots one through three on one side and then 12 and, you know, 12, you know, 11 and 10.
Right, right across each other.
They had buyers on those specific lots.
Yeah, I'm just, I mean, I'm just looking at the aspect.
But if they don't clean it up, every gravel, piece of gravel, every stone that gets worn in by tires going over the top of it just degrades the, the binder course that's there.
Yeah.
I mean, you're saying there was four, there are five.
Five.
Five, sorry, I misspoke. So was Jude going to present anything or give us an update or?
You know, he's here, I, I know the applicant has something going on tomorrow that he couldn't make tonight. So I asked if Jude could represent him, so that's why I asked Jude to stick around.
Thanks, Jude.
He can't speak for them.
I can kind of chime in a little bit here, but this is exactly the fires that I'm talking about that I have to deal with. When this contractor came on, we all thought that he was going to, you know, save the world and Douglas at the same time. And he, he did it first and then it seems like once they got permission to build some of these lots, they, they stopped. I went out there today and was mortified, just like Bill was. And I immediately called Bob and tried to get ahold of Rhino Construction. And I, I said the same things that Bill's saying and some of the planning boards saying is, you guys need tracking pads, you can't just be driving in and out of all these muddy sites wherever you want to exit the road. And the response was a bunch of excuses and that they put silt fence down along the edge of the road, which has nothing to do with tracking the dirt onto the road that's off-site they put these, these hay bales in. They're not getting the fact that they need to sweep this road. One pass up the middle of the road at the end of the day is not cleaning the site up when they leave the site. So I, I agree with everything that everybody's saying and unfortunately, if the route to make them, you know, pick their head up out of the proverbial dirt and pay attention out here is to do exactly what you guys are discussing and, and I think it's reasonable. The one thing that came out of my discussion with Bob today was that Jamie, the Rhino Construction's not necessarily listening to Bob when he tells them that. And he's now hired me to go out twice a week with the NEPA's permit because now we have the EPA and a federal permit involved, not just a local conservation or not just a, you know, this is what you should do as a matter of business. We actually have, you know, a federal permit that's going to be in place now. So that does require tracking pads, that requires street sweeping, that requires all of these things that they're not doing out there. And Bob has hired Andrews or given permission to me to go out and actually monitor this. And if the, if the contractor's not doing this stuff, it's going to be noted in these permits and it's going to be brought back to Bill and, and the decisions need to be made of who needs, who it needs to be reported to.
All right, well, let's, let's move it.
I've worked with him before and I'm very surprised that this didn't happen.
Yeah.
I said, I was very excited at the beginning when he came on board, but yeah, I went out there today and I, I just, I couldn't believe it. And then someone actually said it, and said to me, well, this is clean.
Okay, thank you, Jude.
After a volcano.
That's a relative term.
I mean, I didn't look at it there on, but it wasn't this one.
I mean, in fact, in the beginning there, everything was looking really good, there was a lot of communication, a lot of good things going on. And I think we acted in good faith, thinking the same. Well, it sounds like right now it's running amok personally. And I personally like to see, you take back the five lots.
Yep.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to rescind underneath Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81, to rescind lots one. You?
Yes.
Yeah, I believe it's you. Lots one, four, six, seven, and 11.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made by Les, second by Mike Swicker. Les?
Les Stevens, aye.
Michael.
Mike Greco, aye.
Aaron Socrate, aye.
Mike Swicker, aye.
Jake Scholzberg, aye.
Okay.
So be it, okay?
Good luck, Jude.
I'll let the building department go immediately.
Yeah.
And if something needs to get signed, do we want to have Tracy sign it?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep. You must have a big plate, Jude. It's getting full.
Why don't you guys vote on that? Tracy can sign on.
I'll make a motion.
They're going to ask me tomorrow is when can they get brought out of the corner? What do they have to prove to the board?
Consistent clean and repair, just they got to do what they got to do.
I would suggest that, I would suggest that the board do onesie twosies with the releases.
Yeah.
And that'll demonstrate, you know, their responsiveness.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, like you admitted yourself, you know what needs to be done. And now that you have, like you said, the EPA documents, I mean, the idea is, is the contracts is, you got to start holding their hand to the problem. And that's what's going on right now, they need the hand help. So let them know, I mean, school's out, they ain't going to hold their hands. So when they decide or try to figure it out, how come we're front about? Still that? It's their problem.
Right. So let's vote to have Tracy.
To be honest with you, I was wondering why I was asked to come to the meeting and not the contractor to answer these exact questions, but, but you mean.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
So in addition to the vice chair signing, I would suggest that town council, you know, draft the appropriate language for the paperwork.
Okay.
Yep.
So I'll make a motion that vice chair, Tracy can sign the documents needed.
On behalf.
On behalf of the board. And that town council can address or draft the appropriate paperwork for this.
Motion's been made.
Second.
Second by Aaron.
Yep. Les Stevens, aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Aaron Socrate, aye.
Mike Swicker, aye.
Jake Scholzberg, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jude.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jude.
Yep.
Okay, we're going to do 7:15, public hearing continued?
Yeah.
So we have a request for continuance, right?
Yes.
Yep.
We do.
It's in our packet.
So, so I just want to just quickly let the board know, we did get some revised plans. I posted them online. I don't have hard copies yet. We got a, a letter from a Butter, he's here tonight, it's in your packet. I don't know if he wants to sweep.
Well, can we just be clear on what we're expecting from them eventually when they do present is that we're looking for some traffic study that we talked about. We want a response to the Board of Health in regards to the septic systems. We want that legal ease, we want to understand truly what that means, not just somebody saying it. And there was one other thing.
The, the concerns that were raised at the last meeting by the Butters.
All the Butters.
All the Butters have to be addressed.
Some response to those. That's all. And I mean, that's standard practice.
Right.
And then the, the new plans are posted online, Bill?
Yes. I'm going to ask for a hard copy so you have a hard copy.
I took a couple drives out there.
Right.
Yeah, I drove out there too.
But we expect them to come back when they have all that ready, right? And if they're not ready, we don't want to see them here. I don't think, I don't want to hear somebody's not ready. I mean, I think that's pretty much, it's our time and.
It's first continuance.
We're, we're talking about item two, are we not?
Yeah, that's been withdrawn, I mean, not withdrawn, but just continuation.
I didn't see anything here for that, did they? Do we have a copy of their request?
Yeah, it's in here. It's in the packet.
Sure?
So it's not fair to have someone weighing on it while they're not.
All right, I believe it's, I'll be here.
So everyone knows if they ever want to continue, there's a list of the meeting dates in the back of your packet.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Let's just.
Take a vote on that when we make a meeting.
I think it's in the end.
We already did.
We already voted on it in December.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I'll, I'll just take it, okay?
Yeah, you made the motion.
We weren't sure on the last ones.
Well, we, we didn't, we didn't do the rest of the year, we didn't do October, November. December, we didn't know. Okay.
Wow, this is cool. This is all the.
I didn't understand that.
All the, yeah, accessory apartments, that's cool. Thank you, whoever composed that.
Thank you, Maria.
Thank you, Maria. And then we have our meeting dates. Thank you, Maria.
Okay, so we're at the public hearing continued. So we have a continuance. There's people in the audience, we really can't speak on this because we've already got the continuance. So we're going to continue this hearing.
Waiting for the vote.
Yep, okay. Not yet.
Somebody doesn't walk in?
Right, okay.
If somebody walks and say I was on the
Yeah, yeah. Apologies, I'm bringing you out tonight, but
Just wanted to make sure.
Okay, yeah, we have your letter. It's going to be part of the record. And you can summarize that the next meeting.
And they have to address your concerns.
I'll make a motion to continue the application for Carol Guglielisi and William Cogli for Gilboa Court extension to February
11.
18th. At 7 o'clock, Bill?
Yep, I'll second that.
Motion's been made by Les, seconded by Mike Z.
Les Stevens' eye.
Mike Greco eye. Aaron Sokrath eye.
Mike Z.
Jake?
Jake?
Thank you.
Can we have a friendly amendment and make that 7:15?
7:15?
7:15. Friendly amendment.
The 18th.
February 18th.
Four days after, Bill.
Hey, Bill.
Do you want to take a picture of this, Scott? This is our agenda, I mean, our meetings' schedule?
No, that's
Posted.
Yeah, no, I'd like to question that, but are we waiting until later?
No.
If I had two letters and I was like, oh, forgot for what issue.
Yeah, I sent an email after that and I sent Steve's reply.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have that one or no?
Yes, thanks.
Go slow. I know.
Okay. Hi, next item, 7:30 PM, public hearing continued. Pine, Sand &amp; Stone Company, applications for an earth removal special permit and a water resource protection overlay district special permit, 62 Mantog. We do have another request for continuation. So do we
Yep, February 18th at 7 PM.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing for Pine, Sand &amp; Stone Company, application for earth removal special permit, water resource protection overlay district permit. You want the permit numbers?
No.
For 62 Mantog Street. To, you said seven?
Seven.
Seven on February 18th.
Okay, motion's been made, seconded by Mike Greco. Roll call.
Les Stevens' eye.
Mike Greco eye. Aaron Sokrath eye.
Mike Z.
Jake Schultz.
Thank you.
Four agenda items done and
Okay.
Do our A&R?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're ahead of the bar, right? Well, we get a
Bill, do you want to do your A&R first?
Sure.
Well, the first one's a request for withdrawal.
Oh.
He requests something here.
It's not funded.
Are you running the meeting around?
I know, I just noticed it.
Yeah, he did.
All right, so do you want to
Yeah.
entertain a motion on that withdrawal?
Yeah.
Or move for that withdrawal?
Oh, Bill
See the letter.
So the issue with this one was I issued a comment letter and the majority of my comments were not addressed on the revised plan.
Okay.
So I let them know that and they chose to withdraw.
Okay.
Oh.
With a waiver of the fees for an equivalent submittal.
Okay.
So put that in your motion.
Yep. All right. I'll make a motion to accept the letter to withdraw from James Fitzpatrick and Sleepy Hollow LLC on Lot 18 on Joseph Road and 36 Davis Street. And the grant the request for the fees to be returned.
Waived.
Waived.
I'll second that one's draw.
With an equivalent submittal. And seconded by Mike Z. Roll call.
Les Stevens' eye.
Mike Greco eye. Aaron Sokrath eye.
Mike Z.
Thank you.
Right. I'll take it all. I even got the packet here. I don't know what we I know, things are a little odd, I don't want to fight up in the packet. Still out of schedule? Talk of us. What is this?
I know that spot.
Oh, what's this? I have no idea where he is. It's
It's Cedar Street at Route 60.
It's the bridge.
Oh, boy.
That goes across 60.
Boy.
Seems like they just built that bridge.
I know, five years ago.
Well, actually, it was a, that was a temporary solution that the highway department
Pretty good.
Free material to mess off. So we're supposed to every five years get it reviewed by a structural engineer, but we applied under this grant program, so a half million dollar grant to actually put a box cover in.
Nice.
Great.
You might recall if you went to the last town meeting, we did get approval to take a number of easements on private property. That's what this plan does. We're not changing any property lines, nothing's changing for ownership. We're just getting rights to do work on private property. Some of the easements are temporary, some of them are permanent.
Okay.
So I'm thinking of widening that bridge. There will be two-way traffic.
Two-way?
Oh, awesome.
And it's a boxcar or con
It's a boxcar.
Concrete based?
Yep.
Okay. Open underneath? Full solve, okay.
What does that mean? What did you say?
So Part of Cedar Street before Route 16 or after it, so to speak.
Where's north of 16?
Right.
The wooden bridge, do you have a saw?
You know where the sign is, it says, this is my bridge and all that other stuff.
Yeah, the guy, I was on the next question was going to be, he had to shut it.
Something like, we know it's something like that.
Yep.
Mike, you could, Mike, there's a packet, there's a plan.
Oh.
And you can see where Webster Street is. It's right there.
Yeah, really good.
Where you can see it.
Take that quick coke off 16.
Oh, yeah. The turning. Okay, good.
Comment from Webster.
Will the cover be a little broader than it is now?
Oh, yes.
Off more, because sometimes that gets, it's been clogged.
That's where the perimeter things are, is that?
Nice, nice, nice. So
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
So
Your engineer already knows, I spoke with him. He already knows.
To answer Aaron's question, he was asking about the cover, you know, I was asking you about it and you said it's not. So they make a U-shaped cover where you pour footings and drop it in.
Yep.
But it sounds like this one's basically going to be like two U's coming together.
That was driven by cost and the amount of the grant that we got, so
Who knows?
You know, the open bottom box covers are more expensive.
Oh, yeah.
I know the engineers talked to the Conservation Commission before they proceeded with the design, so, you know.
So it's like a prefab. Yeah, yeah. It comes with its own foundations and footings of all. It's going to come with a crane.
By doing this, will it be then carry any weight?
Oh, yeah, it's H, could be H20.
So and what's the length, they give a length for it?
Long enough that, you know, I think everyone here at the table won't have to worry about it.
Sounds like a plan.
Well, Jake, Mike.
Hi.
So I'll entertain a motion for endorsement.
I'll make a motion, unless Jake wants to say anything.
We can't see him, so we don't know if he's there.
He's there.
I'll wait.
Yep. There he is.
Jake, what say you?
All sounds good.
Good.
Perfect.
So I'll make a motion to endorse the A&R plan for the town of Douglas, Cedar Street easements.
Second.
Motion made by Mike Z, seconded by Aaron.
Yep. Les Stevens' eye.
Mike Greco eye. Aaron Sokrath eye.
Mike Z.
Thank you.
I didn't know, I didn't know the U-shaped ones are cheaper, more expensive than the purple.
Well, because they got to put a footing.
They got to put footings in, yeah.
Yeah, I know, I know, they got to put footings in. Yeah, they got to dress them all.
Nice, this is that.
I've seen, I've seen them both ways, I just never
That's a great concept, that's a great idea.
Yeah. All right, two-way traffic.
He's going to have to move those signs, the easement. Right, those pieces of plywood.
You know what, it's just getting people to slow down on that road.
Today's date, right?
Yes.
1/26.
Still going to get people to slow down on that road. Cedar, that'll bend.
Oh, he's gonna
Hucking.
That's my way to
Like they knew how many members we could be here tonight, they only gave us five ones.
Who did that?
Hey, our engineer.
Our engineer, huh?
Who's that? Jake?
Do the revise, we have to vote on that revised plan and board meeting schedule?
Oh, no.
Or just note it?
We already voted on this and it's just demonstrated.
Oh, okay. And then vouchers?
Vouchers?
Or we can do meeting minutes?
You don't have to vote on vouchers.
Well, we have any? Okay.
I don't think so, I didn't see any to be signed, so.
Do we have meeting minutes?
Meeting minutes?
Mike, you got meeting minutes?
Weren't any.
Weren't any?
From last week. I don't know whatever happened, it disappeared.
11:19?
Yeah. Meeting minutes for
I'll take your pen.
Something to six.
Six hundred compound?
There's 11:19 or 12:10 that are available, 1:12 we still are working on.
It's wet.
Ready. So we're in line, I know that, I don't think she handed it around previously, but I don't know.
We'll do it next time.
We didn't find anything in the packet last week, so.
Oh, the minutes?
Yeah.
Did you, oh, did you find, hire someone, Bill? Was that the
We are still searching. And I got some votes and shared them with Matt regarding the temp and he thought
Then maybe we should remove our signatures on that piece of paper.
He thinks that's
All right. Number two.
There it is.
All right, we got some minutes here.
Bill, what's your thoughts on this accessory apartments, the list that Maria's provided us? Is that worthwhile to post on our website?
Yes, everybody should know that everybody else has these things.
No, it's just that way they're
Public knowledge.
People can go look if they have to check their expiration dates and stuff like that, because I know we've
Well, these can't record it at the Registry of Deeds, I mean, they are public record.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think it's necessary to post
So you don't, you don't think that, you know, we approve these things and all of a sudden there's 14 cars every day for, and they find out there's 40 people living in one of these apartments and
Forty people?
My point is, is that they're supposed to be used for who they're supposed to be used for.
Let me say before
I think it's a rarity.
We haven't had a problem yet.
Yeah, I think it's a rarity, but we're not like framing him.
Let's not try and find a problem.
No, just ask it. That's a simple question.
We have plenty of problems.
I don't think that would, I don't think that causes a problem, I think it's just, it's public record, it's public. I'm surprised
I just wanted to bring it up, and then that's fine.
I'm surprised.
You have a single-family house with 40 cars out there every single day?
No, but, but people Yeah, but people
Hey, that's your house, Mike, okay?
So moving on residential compound regulations. So in your packet you have
Did you vote to accept the withdrawal on the A&R plan for Fitzpatrick?
Yes. When you were queuing up the and waive the fees for
It's also, technically Pine.
Correct.
Pine's the owner, I want to make this, but well, JMT is the owner.
Yeah.
Let me, let me just say it, please. JMT is the owner of the parcel being subdivided, not Fitzpatrick. Fitzpatrick is an
The motion contained both.
In a friendly amendment, if it did not, that JMT, Sleepy Hollow LLC is included in that request for a withdrawal. Motion. All right, back to the residential compound regulations, revising those. Les, did you want to tell us about
Yeah.
Your revisions?
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to probably do it with a full board when Ernie's here.
Okay.
I, just from our last discussion, I just want to be brief on it. Just from our last discussion, we talked about that the planning board has the authority to waive portions or sections of the requirements for residential compound. So there's no language in here stating such. So I'd just like to probably table this into our next meeting when we have a full board, so we can discuss it.
Generally, the board can waive any requirement.
For your own regulations, you can't, no different than a subdivision.
Yeah.
It's not a zoning bylaw.
Yeah.
Okay. I just looked for the language.
I think that it's more, the board would know, would need to know. Yeah, we just need to keep that in mind, that we have that ability.
All right.
And I think it probably says that in our regulation somewhere, that the board can waive any section.
I guess we got 15 minutes.
Bill, do you have anything else?
Um, no.
There's the copies of the residential compound in there.
Yeah, I saw that.
Like recommended changes, I think, just for our discussion, the next meeting.
Let's see, the 10 to 5 change. Right now, cards 10 lots?
Yeah, yeah, I just, I threw some stuff in there just for discussion, Mike, nothing other than discussion purposes, you know? Just whatever the board's feeling is on it, that's all.
I mean, I have no problem.
Whatever the feeling is, you know what I mean?
Put the five lot, but I also feel I should say it 100.
Is Jude still there?
Yep. Yeah, again, I just when we review those things, it's
Sign or stamp.
No, boy, the stamper, we're not going to need these.
Is he taking them up?
Yeah.
Pass it along. Solar's over there. Here's another one for over there. Is this the pass on to Bill?
Bill, who's, Bradford's our engineer? The Bradford's our engineer, we did the
Raymond Pedersen.
Okay, the stamper's at Bradford, that's why I just
Yeah, that's the land surveyor over there.
Okay. That's the town's engineer company they use, okay. Is the town considering Hemlock Street as well for future bridge repair? Or they, we did Hemlock Bridge.
We did Hemlock, we did South Street, we did
Are they looking at
Cedar twice?
Yeah, are they looking at other, you know, other areas, bridges to redo?
No, we want to get some roads done.
Yeah, that would be a bad deal, yeah.
Oh, road paving or improvements?
Yeah.
I don't know, they did, they did a reroute out and it came out pretty good. I was really happy with the last few roads that John's done, those guys that did top notch.
Actually, bits came in on Cedar Street way under the estimates.
Excellent, excellent, excellent.
What are they figuring, yes?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's going to be a big shutdown.
With the bridge, with the prefab and everything?
I think, I think it was. Oh, Bill, you know this, the one, the one in North Bridge, the one was, was it, it goes down to the factory there. That bridge never got put back in.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because it was on private property.
Oh, was it on private property, okay.
I think they went to court too.
Did they? Yeah, because I just remember there was, in another town, the bridge project, I think, took like four years. So if we can get ours done in 12 months, that'd be great.
Yeah.
But two-way traffic on that street would be something new.
And the curve.
And the curve. Yep. I think I'll remove one accident on that street.
Usually we go over.
I know, I know.
Wait because we thought the one we cut before would be here.
I know.
Well, you know, it's no conditions.
You don't know.
In like conservation, we put everyone on at seven and then it's like 10 o'clock.
Yeah.
I know. So you can't do it either way, you can't, doesn't work.
Doesn't matter how you do it, you lose.
It doesn't work, yeah.
There we go. It's funny, some of the, some meetings I'm in, we do.
We do, yeah, we have to wait until 7:49 anyways.
Elevator pit.
59.
7:59, yeah.
Yeah, we should have done that at 7:50. Give us a few more minutes.
I think the board knows the feelings.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
What's this? Sorry.
Extras.
Hey, no tapping.
Hey, I got blamed for the tap.
You are mostly tapping.
Really?
Yeah.
10 minutes. Pause the meeting. Pause the meeting and reconvene. What snow again?
Four inches? Finally, I stacked, and we've got two more of these. Build strong bones, you know? I'm a wonder boy.
I will never invest in any weather man related, or weather person related.
I bet you got some stuff.
Mike, how often is a weather man correct or weather?
But I was out there today.
Best job in the world.
Exactly. Tracy, Tracy's hooked on a weather app. I'm like, I wouldn't buy that.
Just three days ago saying there's no snow for two weeks.
I know.
And all of a sudden this thing comes out of something.
I wouldn't buy that weather app.
Well, it's supposed to be one to three.
Yeah.
News tonight, three to five.
Yeah.
Right.
When you wake up in the morning, who knows?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, how much will it snow? And logically, it's pretty accurate.
Now, we got cold snow.
Let's see if they change their mind. Oh, yeah, it has changed from four and a half to two and a half.
Oh, there we go.
Over the next eight days.
Eight days.
Now it started. Like, I don't know, I liked it. Are we just?
We went to.
Treading water here till 8 o'clock?
You ever been there?
Yeah.
I'd like to ask about the schedule. First of all, what does it mean? What in the world is Blackstone Logistics? See, number two, it looks like you've added an extra meeting day. You didn't make this out?
It's Alvin, unbelievable, great practice.
So, so did you add an extra meeting day?
No, the only thing I did was shuffle the open meeting.
My cousin owns the coffee mug. Ever hear of the coffee mug?
I didn't know if it resolved anything about this Black. What does it resolve, is it a meeting?
It's an application for three towns.
Right near Harvey.
So we had a conversation at the last meeting. About meeting our off week services.
No, no, Harvey Construction Materials.
We would meet here in this room, but it would be a remote meeting with.
It's off at 20.
The, the, the name of the place.
So it is a physical meeting you've added to the schedule.
We talked about this at the last meeting.
It, it, it's a, it's a meeting for the planning board specifically for that night, for that project, because it's a tri-town.
No other project.
Try other town, no other agenda item, just that, that discussion, because it's a tri-town.
So it's the same dates we had talked about, it's just I think we, we had, you know, swapped the weeks.
So, but that makes, that makes three meetings for February.
That's right.
Technically, yes.
You could remote in though.
And four, and four for March.
So, Mike, you could remote in.
Yeah, four for March.
Yeah.
I worked it, I was trying to go in person, but.
And then plus your conservation.
Yeah, it closes in one night. It's not going to happen in one night, I know that.
And, and, and Bill, you've got a file online, right, with this?
Yes, we have a link online.
Yeah, and you already showed the initial plan to Mike, remember the plan? We get that little, we get like a 25% of the building.
Yeah, I know.
And like 33, 30% of the parking lot or something like that.
30%.
Question was, that then brings up the question.
Of the parking lot?
Well, we get a bigger parking lot piece in the building.
So I see three, I see three meetings for February here.
Yeah, Andy would like to be on camera.
I don't think so.
All right, there we go. Hold on, Andy, it's right there. It's swiveling, it's coming to you, coming. Oh, limitation. There's Andy, the man in green. It's Andy.
Just take it and spin it.
Bill, how come, how come that camera doesn't tie into these or?
I have no idea.
Okay. We're good there.
This is the selectmen's.
Yeah, the roads are a little tough.
Website shows right now, do we do this?
Well, nothing yet, they haven't done anything yet.
Yeah, the jury's still out on what's going on. Is that your basement, Chris?
Nah, I'm above my garage.
You let you out?
I haven't been upstairs in the house from above my garage. To hear two kids screaming.
In, in the unheated space? He's got a heater in the garage? You know, you know when he's running, if he's, if he's unheated.
I'm going to miss quarantine.
It's only the beginning.
Right.
It's like I'm his best friend, he emailed me like three times today.
He can, he can probably only play solitaire for so long. Oh, you're quarantined? It'd be different if there was like, you know, NASCAR on, he'd probably be.
Yeah, I've seen enough soap operas.
Let's make a deal, Chris.
I've seen them all.
You could have fun on him.
Yeah, right.
They said that they gave out 44 million shots already, doses?
Not bad.
Had to get our second dose. My wife got Moderna, the second dose Sunday.
Yeah, mine's getting her.
She's all right.
Wednesday.
Wasn't any effects or anything. Did you hear a study came out and it was in Israel? And 186,000 people, they, they tracked after they got their second dose. Since then, no one, well, 10 people out of 186,000 actually got COVID after. So, oh, it's like 99% effective, they think.
Point, yeah, 9 or whatever it is.
It's good.
Yeah, yeah, that's, oh, yeah, and then, so the, right now, there's two farm, there's two of them doing it right now with the shots. I forget the other, I forget the other one, Pfizer and someone else. Yeah, there's, yeah, there's two shots right now available. Johnson and Johnson, I don't think is, there'll be the third or whatever. Nah, Mark's not there, it's Pfizer and someone else, begins with a D, I think. But they're both two shots and stuff like that.
Yeah, Moderna and Pfizer.
Okay, I thought you combined them too.
Okay, board, let's get ready to go back to the tables.
Camera, Bill, Jude still there?
Cooperstown Road Realty Trust.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's call them out.
There he is.
Hi Jude. So we are going to reopen the continued public hearing Cooperstown Road Realty Trust. Did you have any communication with the applicant?
Um, I did, and she asked to, she wanted me to, what the board said to me. And I was trying to explain to her that we're in a meeting. I just think it's in the best interest to withdraw this thing instead of having you vote on it negatively. I would advise her either way to do it that way, so I just think that. I think we should just withdraw it.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jude.
So I want to be clear, that's a request to withdraw the application, Jude?
Yes, it is. And you'll support tomorrow with the appropriate manner and procedure.
Thanks.
But we will allow or what, on the fees?
Waive fees with a substantially equivalent application, reapplication.
Yeah, so they know that, you know?
Yeah.
Jude?
The next, yeah, the next time you see my smiling face on this, this plan, you'll, you'll get a complete package with.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. No problem.
Yes, thank you.
So we have to.
Yes.
Yeah, we'll just say.
To accept the. Accept the withdrawal request.
So we'll accept the motion for withdrawal for Cooper Town Road?
Cooper Town Realty Trust.
Yeah, and we'll waive the fee. For substantially for the same type of project.
Yep.
Second.
Motion been made by Mike Z, second amendment by G.
La Stevens eye.
Mike Rekko eye.
Aaron Sokrata eye.
Mike Spucker eye.
Jake?
Yeah, someone's talking.
The motion was to accept the applicant's.
Can you mute yourself for a second, please?
Yeah.
The motion was to accept the applicant's request to withdraw the application with a waiver of the fees for a substantially equivalent application, resubmital.
For the Cooper Realty Trust project.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Just for clarity, that's presuming they don't request their fee that we have in, in the account.
Correct, correct.
Yeah, if they, they request it all back, whatever, then.
They'd have to file again.
Yeah.
Yeah, of course, yeah, and then Jude needs to get that letter to you tomorrow, which he's promised. It's eight, right?
Mm-hmm, there you go, two.
Okay, next item on the agenda, 8:00 PM, public hearing, Dolphany Concrete, application for site plan review, One Lackey Dam Road. The Town of Douglas Planning Board Legal Notice of Public Hearing. Name of applicant, Dolphany Concrete, name of owner, Pine, Sand and Stone. Date and time of public hearing, Tuesday, January 26, 2021, at 8:00 PM. Subject matter of the hearing, the applicant is requesting approval from the Douglas Planning Board pursuant to the Douglas zoning bylaws, Section 9.4 Site Plan Review. Project description, installation of a second batch plant. Project site and location, the project is located at One Lackey Dam Road. Assessors map 115, parcel five. Place of public hearing, Douglas Municipal Center, resource room 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. A copy of the application is available for review during regular business hours in the Community Development Department, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. 01516. Tracy Sharkey for Ernest Marks, Chairman, Douglas Planning Board. Okay, is the applicant here or someone presenting, name and address?
My name is Brian Nelson, Metro West Engineering.
Okay, Bill, where would you like him to stand?
Wherever he wants. I haven't used a two in the presentation board, so I wasn't sure where you wanted me to. Go over there, there, anywhere you want. Probably so I could get you on camera.
Okay. Oh, yeah, Mike and Eric.
Yeah.
Why not move up?
Yeah. Can I do it right over here?
Yeah, right, take the corner.
Also?
Yes, whenever you are.
Thank you. Just wanted to let you know that, again, my name is Brian from Metro West Engineering. Andy Leonard from Pine, Sand and Stone is to my left. And Chris Dolphany is on our TV screen tonight. So here to present the project for the Dolphany Concrete Plant. And this is a blow up of basically the, the general project site. But just to give you a little overview, the, the existing Dolphany plant and the proposed plant are located on the Pine, Sand and Stone property right off of Lackey Dam Road. It's on about a 73 acre property located just west of Route 146. And if you were looking at this board, 146 would be over here, north is going basically straight up this page. So the blow up of the site is looking at that northeastern corner, northeastern corner of the property. And just to give you a little context, northerly boundary line would be here. The existing batch plant is shown, basically right in here in this brown color. We've got some bins and some basically different staging areas. And the proposed plant would be located about 250 feet northwest. So the proposed plant is actually shown in this orangish red color right here. Basically, the, both plants are, are located within the gravel pit. It's an active gravel processing and, and mine that's operated by Pine. Site gains access basically off of Lackey Dam Road, so it would be about 200 or 300 feet south, basically down in this location. And then basically coming up along the access road along the easterly edge of the property. Again, the existing batch plant is located here. Topo in this area is relatively flat. And as you start to head up into the gravel pit to the west, elevations rise up as you head in the west and northwesterly direction. Most of the site and what's shown in gray basically is area that's traversed by heavy equipment, concrete trucks, you know, loaders and things like that. So it's not paved, but it's more or less an impervious surface. There are some areas, you know, we've shown them in green just for some contrast, and, and these are areas that really aren't traveled as heavily by vehicles. And just some access roads, basically a couple main ones, one that comes around northwest and up this way. Another one that kind of heads from the pit, you know, back out towards 146. And Dolphany is looking to basically purchase and install new batch plant. Again, it would be located about 250 feet or so from center to center northwest of the existing plant. The plant will be located, this is an existing concrete pad right here, so the majority of the plant will be located on that existing concrete pad. A bunch of the surrounding concrete pad will be removed, so there will be actually a reduction of about 1,500 square feet of impervious area. The plant will consist of four loading bins that will be located on the west side. And that will gain access from the gravel road, basically, and it'll be fed through this access area right here. These loading bins will transfer material into the mixing bins, which are located on that existing concrete pad. That material will be processed up to the loading tower where concrete trucks will actually enter from the east, get loaded and then back out and proceed out to a job site. So again, those are kind of the three main components of the plant. And basically, the plant is intended to, to give Dolphany some flexibility in terms of, you know, basically delivering products. So a lot of the peak orders and a lot of the larger jobs where they're supplying concrete are requiring large amounts of concrete in a relatively short duration. And so this plant allows basically to load trucks twice as fast, you know, with two plants running. There are 21 trucks presently garaged or parked here overnight. The intent is to have those 21 trucks remain, it's just basically to allow flexibility in loading, especially early in the morning, if there's a large pour early in the morning, to, you know, basically load those trucks twice as fast and get them out to the job sites. The plant, the new plant will also provide just some flexibility in terms of maintenance and unforeseen breakdowns. If, if this plant goes down, you've got the second one as a backup and kind of that flexibility to keep one operating while one's being maintained. So really looking at this plant as something that will reduce congestion on the site as it will allow vehicles to disperse a little bit. You'll have trucks being loaded here, trucks being loaded here. Idle times and queuing times will be reduced with the flexibility of having the two plants instead of one. And basically, it's, this is a good location for, you know, one or two concrete plants as a lot of the raw materials come out of the pine pit. So instead of having a lot of deliveries to a plant, a lot of that comes internally without having to hit the local streets. And again, we submitted a, a minor site plan review application. We had gotten some feedback from the Community Development Department yesterday. We made some revisions to the plans early this morning, put some responses to the comments and sent those back in. With that, I guess I'd be happy to answer any questions or if Chris is on and he would like to add anything, certainly now would be a good time if he'd like to.
Uh, no, I'm available, though, to answer any questions if, if they are to be handed over to me.
I only have one question. I understand that, you know, you've got the amenities, concrete, stone, all of, everybody's hauling concrete, they need the flats. The only question I have is that they need to weigh from the height.
Would that six? Would that be a zoning issue?
That is, and it's no different than the crossing the property boundary. So this property is comprised of two properties, it's Pine, Sand and Stone and its debris. And there, there's a common property boundary that's, that was originally where the equipment was proposed, but they readjusted things on their second submittal so that only the conveyor belt straddles the setback line between the two properties. So the question was, you know, hey, are you, how can you avoid, you know, this setback issue? I talked to town council about it and basically there's two ways, you can do an A and R plan or you can request a variance from the zoning board. So the, the revision that they've submitted moves structures outside of that setback line. But the conveyor still crosses the line. I don't know if the conveyor is considered a structure or not. That's a question for the building. That's a question for, that's a question for the building commissioner, that's not for you guys.
I agree, we agree.
And, and I'm just pointing it out. And likewise with the height, Aaron.
For the zoning, it would be a zoning, official decision.
That's a zoning thing, it's either allowed or not allowed. You're really addressing the, the site, okay? The operation, the traffic, the stormwater.
But I have a question though, is does that come into play? I mean, you know. I mean, you know, as far as in that area, what is our maximum height? Is it 65 feet?
I believe it's 60.
Yeah.
60?
But they could seek a variance.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, I know that. I'm looking up.
Well, the industrial chart is showing 60 in here.
I mean, just so they know, I'm just bringing that up.
I'm not seeing.
I don't care if they need feet. I mean, it's a little weird. I mean, you need to have it, I work next to Sterling in Oxford.
Yeah.
I mean, they've got a huge tower. You have to have it, or that's bad.
The maximum height for the zone is 60 feet, um, the existing plant has a height of 72, so this one would be just a little bit.
Right, so you're going to vary it same when you did the last one or whatever, or do a ZVA or, just so you know.
So, what I would suggest, if you, if you act favorably on the application, I would encourage you to put in your findings that you are not making any determinations on the appropriate zoning purpose.
Good point.
Well, that's why I was bringing it up.
Yeah.
We have sort of things going on here.
Decide.
A lot of them, but yeah, it's out of.
Correct. That, that portion is out of power.
That portion is out of our control.
And this is considered a minor modification because it's under 2,000 square feet, the area, is that right?
That's, that was our take on it.
Yeah. Yeah. Good. And, you know, to Mike's point, I mean, it's, it's going to be needed, you look at the projects that are going in on 146.
You know, along those lines too, you know, Jay had brought up the question on accessory use, because the other site, the debris site, is, uh, currently an active gravel pit, and, uh, you know, this would be an accessory use on the same property.
So, it's all consistent with the industrial use.
These are all questions, I think, for the building commissioner, and that's why I think, you know, having that in our findings is, is a great.
Come here.
But in my mind, it's consistent with the site and the units.
Oh, yeah.
It's all the same way, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
And for the most part, the stone, you, how much percentage of the stone you guys get on the pit, or how much you chuck it in?
He's wondering, how much is on-site that you're using as a percentage?
All of it. Are you guys able to get it all from the?
Okay, name and address. I'm sorry, and through the chair. Sorry, we've got remote participation, so if you'd like to speak, you have to be recognized by the chair first. And, name and address to Mike's question. Sorry, everybody can't.
I think Dolphany's trucks in a small part of the state's spectrum. Yeah, that's a state's spectrum, yeah, reasonable. Oh, that's about it. Yeah.
But it's sustainable, the fact that most of the material is on-site is quite a coup for us, the town, and for the business as well. I think it's a good thing, and I'd like to support that.
Yes.
Jake, do you have any questions or comments for right now? Okay, all right.
You, last?
Yeah, um, no, I'm, I'm okay with it.
Nothing. Aaron?
Pretty straightforward. I'm all set, I actually read a lot of the responses, and they seem to be, have answers, but I feel fairly satisfied with some of it.
Well, I mean, you're going to have to act on waivers, they're virtually requesting a waiver from every section in.
Yeah, but it's consistent, yeah.
The, uh, I do want to point out, just for administrative purposes, um, the initial application came in without any butters list for the debris property, um, so Chris went ahead today, or yesterday, and, uh, got the, the butters list for both Sutton and Douglas for the debris, debris property, and gladly, there are no new people on that, that other butters list, so that, um, it wouldn't delay tonight's meeting.
Okay. All right. Is there any waivers?
Do you want to go over the waivers, or one by one, or?
Or concerns that?
As presented, I mean, the waivers.
That's fine, we had actually listed them all in a letter, we had originally submitted some stuff, I think, on January 5th, which had waivers from, uh, section 9.4.4, zoning bylaw. Uh, I can go through those if you like, we had revised the list.
Or do we need to?
I think just the critical ones that.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
A lot of this is just the way, because it's not applicable. Is it, Bill, is there any ones that you want us to discuss?
Um, you know, they, they didn't show parking on the plan, um, which to me, you know, you go out there, I've been going out there for 20 years, and, you know, the, the thing is, you know, I don't think we've ever really had a site plan from site, and, um.
They park wherever they want to park.
The site's abundant with area, the problem is, you know, like any gravel pit or heavy traffic area, there's a lot of activity going on, so, you know, um, I'm not concerned that there's inadequate number of spaces, the concern is, let's have a designated spot.
The only thing I see on that, and I know on a lot of pits, it's constantly evolving too, though. Where you might be parking today, they might need that spot for doing something else, so pretty hard not to say you can always stay here. Even in front of a garage, you might say, yeah, I want to park here, but I need to bring a question plant down to fix on it, well.
It's dynamic, it's dynamic, it moves.
And this is consistent with the way they've been doing business the whole time.
Yeah.
So, I don't want to think that we know their business better than they do, and I don't know that that's important, to me, anyway.
Well, it's just like I want to.
You brought it up.
Yeah, before.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Let me finish, please, a second. Like I've said before, and I'm not picking on them tonight, site plan review, the purpose is safety, and, you know, having a safe area for both the employees as well as anybody that might be traveling through the site is, is what the purpose of this is. So, you know, just pointing it off the boards can be.
I think.
Do you have any comment on that?
The only comment I would like to offer in terms of parking, um, certainly is that the new plant will at most have one employee kind of dedicated to overseeing its operation and maintenance, and that might even be an employee who presently works at this plant. So, we saw at most we'd be creating the need for one new parking space, so it seemed to me, on a site of 73 acres, it seemed de minimis. Um, and that was our thought, is that basically the use is consistent with what's already there. I think the plant could even be operated remotely if needed, so there might not even be a designated employee there a lot of the time, so we didn't see the need to.
So, where would that employee be parking if they were to be working at that second plant?
I would say it would be over east, um, there's certainly a clear area over here, but there is room around the existing plant.
So, how many employees are currently employed at that?
That's probably a good question for you, Chris.
Ask that again, what did you ask?
How many employees are employed at this location, Chris?
Uh, so currently, there's, uh, roughly 24, um, between the drivers, batch again, two dispatchers, but it's roughly 24 people if we're in full, full tilt.
Full tilt, yeah.
And I think if you want to see where the employees park now, Andy could probably trip you on, bring the plan there with the current employees parked, um, in case people want to see.
Yeah, they, they actually employ right along the edge of the leash line for the most part, Chris?
Yeah.
Yeah, right behind the office.
Okay.
They all park right here, um, and some along.
The two, the two office girls park in front of the office.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and then, uh, everyone else kind of parks on the backside where the propane tanks are there.
Yeah, well, pretty much all along here.
Question.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, question to you, Chris, LaStevens here, um, your office is not relocating, right? So, you know, for purposes of the general public driving up to go water concrete, so there's no change to your office area, relocation?
We're not looking to change that.
Okay.
And, uh, we leave a ample parking there for our customers. It, on a daily basis, you might, or maybe on a weekly basis, you have two people that come to the office.
Yeah, it's all funded, yeah.
Very slow traffic load, coming in the door there, so.
Okay.
But we leave spots in front of the office for people to come in.
Fair enough, okay.
And in this new plant that Brian said, we can either run that with one person in the plant, that's all it usually takes to run a plant, just one employee, or the new way to do it now, it's through a computer, it's just, uh, I could sit here, say warranty and batch on a green.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, you might, yeah. Um, so this is a public hearing, anyone in the audience have any questions or concerns in regards to this application? I'll go online first if anybody, do you see anybody that you don't recognize?
I see that one.
Okay, Chris, Bob Mennerick, Jake, Kevin, and you.
Yeah.
Okay, um, anyone in the audience here have any questions or comments or concerns? Okay.
Well, we have to address the requests for waivers.
Waiver, yep.
Yes, I, I don't, I need to make, can we make a motion, can I make a motion to accept the waivers as?
And, and accept those as presented here and not?
We close the public hearing first.
Yeah, let's do it.
Or you want to roll them?
Yeah, any other waivers, concerns?
Do we even know what they are?
The parking was the concern.
I know, but we haven't discussed.
For everybody to know.
Okay.
Is there any new lighting proposed?
Uh, not that I'm aware of, again, um.
I, I can't answer that, I'm, I'm sure we'd have some lighting in on the plant because we do start down here, you know, concrete usually on-site between 6:00 and 7:00 in the morning, and, you know, lights on our heads down, um, so we would have some lighting on the plant, obviously, if we're operating in the dark, so you can use, do that, we'll do some lights. So, it'd be similar to what we have there currently.
Are they shown on the plan?
The lighting?
Yeah. Can you ju, Chris, could you just review what hours of operation you're requesting?
Well, currently, we run that whenever it's needed, 24/7. Um, we, we do a lot of Mass Highway work, and, uh, as most people know, most of that bridge work and highway work is done overnight nowadays.
Yep.
Uh, you call, we go, so, and we run, we run 24/7, I've slept in that office at late, um, and go that, that way for now, concrete, so, as far as the hours of operation, it's kind of, um, we, we really don't have strict hours, I mean, we usually say we operate 6 to 5, but there's many nights we're down there at night because we're pouring highway work to go.
Yep.
And that's 365.
When you get to a big, you get a big warehouse project going, they generally start, get poured at midnight, they put a thousand yards of concrete in, they usually start at midnight, so they've done pouring concrete by 8 to 10 in the morning, that's where they finish it, and it's usually a 24-hour process on the job site, so, when I mean standard hours, it's usually 6 to 5, but we do run 24 with me.
Yep.
We wouldn't be running two plants 24 hours, it's not a high demand in the middle of night, you know, the peak demand is usually like Brian said, first late in the morning, getting the trucks out, or a big slab place for warehouse type project. The problem is, they empty five to six trucks simultaneously in the site, and when you can only load one at a time.
Yeah.
You get a severe backup in, in the yard.
Yep.
You get cold concrete.
Yeah, you get problems.
Yep. And it's a creative.
Yep.
And they bring it back.
Or you, you have, you have to cost.
365 days a year, Chris?
I'd like to say. If we needed, I'd probably be there, I'm that type of guy.
Well, no, I don't want to limit the.
My wife wouldn't want to hear me say that, that's why I did another room.
Our standard decision has some limitations on days of operation, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, I mean, we, obviously, we don't work on the major holidays, um, but Mass Highway does a lot of Sunday work, uh, they start there Mondays as Sunday night, if we're pouring on a highway project, then Monday is technically Sunday night, there's a lot of Sunday nights we've been down yet, makes it really pretty.
Just whatever it is requested.
Some federal holiday.
When they're, when we're in there at night, a lot of times, no one even knows we're there. It takes about six to seven minutes to load a truck, and then we're gone, you know, so there's a lot of, like you said, we're in there working now.
Chris, how big is the site? Was, you said 73 acres?
73 acres, yeah.
Oh, well, that's okay.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
It's a small town.
I need to count on.
Yeah.
I need parameters.
Yeah. 24/7, 365. Christmas and Thanksgiving.
I mean, really, 24/7, 365.
Yeah. I mean, they can decide when they work, when they don't work.
Yeah.
We do emergency services, emergency bridge deck repairs.
Yeah, there's nothing you can do about that.
If they get distinct calls, they don't want to hear that we can't operate.
It'll go somewhere else, right? Well.
So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have to.
365.
Yeah. Yep. That's what they got today. Throw it out today.
Okay, anything else, Board? Are you ready to?
Yeah.
I'll entertain any motions that the Board would like to make.
Well, if, if the Board wants to hear these waivers that are being requested, I've read through them, and they're consistent, I think, with the fact that it's consistent with the use of the site now, and they're only adding one more person probably at max, and there will be more internal truck, you know, uses and such like that. And as far as stormwater management and reports and architectural plans and all of that, I think it's, they're doing the same that they've already done, and I don't think it's going to affect, you know, or, or I don't think we need to demand that from, from them for this. It's consistent, it's within a 73-acre site, and it's an industrial use, and it provides a service to the state as well as everybody else, and, I mean, they're in business for business, I get that, but that's what we're here for, so, um, if, if no one disagrees with me, I'd like to make a motion to entertain us approving the wa, these waivers as requested.
Public hearing.
After we close the public hearing, so let's decide.
So, let's decide, now, are you all set?
That's really up to the Board.
These notes with the hours of operation and stuff, while you're down, uh, I will.
That's your answer?
Yeah, you'll see, you'll see the decision after next meeting.
Good.
No, I, can I agree with you? Can I agree with everything going on?
No, I'm not.
But we've been vetted for closing the public hearing, and get the final decision and realize we should have changed something, so.
Well, as long as the decision reflects what we're talking about.
Right.
I think it's more straightforward than typical.
Right.
Okay, so you want to, you want to leave it open until we get the decision in hand?
Then we get the decision, so are we going to review it by everybody?
Yes, I agree.
So that you can all review it?
Because it's going to take a.
Before we vote, because if we vote on it now, that's it. So normally, we'll hold off till you get a copy of the decision, so you can review it, hold it up, and then.
When's our next meeting, though?
We wouldn't be signing it.
Yeah. When's our next meeting?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth. What's your six? Yes.
February 11th.
11th, 11th.
February 11th.
February, no, that's the.
No, and we keep mixing up, that's only the blackstone one, because it's the blackstone logistics.
Again, you know, it's up to the applicant, you know, through the chair.
If there's anything else that's going to be presented, that's why you leave it open.
Right. Until they can read.
Do we need any further information?
Make sure everything's good, and we can take a quick.
Well, should we ask the applicant if there's, I mean, it's sort of like there, you feel like you've presented everything you've got to present, nothing's going to change from what you presented, it's, it's sort of, it's your prerogative. They want to close, they can close. Right, we can close it if you suggest that you're good.
My take on it is that we've presented the plans and, you know, we've revised plans as requested and responded to comments. Chris, I'll, I'll kind of defer to you a little bit as well if, um, you know, if this is, you know, if this interferes with your timing and.
We need to order equipment. I know we got to check for a couple more things, preparing some stuff, but we need to, we.
We're talking about closing.
This equipment just doesn't come. This equipment just.
Chris, we're talking about just closing the hearing right now from your point of view. Are you feeling like everything's in place for us to close the hearing?
I believe so. We can refer it to my father's in the audience here. He wants to speak up.
You want to say anything, Paul?
Are you ready, Paul?
Yeah, I'm ready. I just.
Name and address. Sorry.
The waivers, we're going to accept this if presented. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, what you presented tonight, you feel comfortable that that's enough, that you're not going to make any substantial, any changes per se. So that we don't want to, you know, then we can keep it open or we can close it.
We don't want to have a hundred extra questions after too.
No, well, Bill's going to read the decision.
But based on?
Based on everything tonight. That's been talked about. And we've left this open so that you can review it. Because right now, we close it and accept it, what he writes up is what you get. That's it. So if it's left open, you can review it, make sure everything's good between everybody, then we close and vote on it for next week.
No, not necessarily. Bill's going to send it to the applicant for review and then they work through it even after we close the hearing.
That would be my question.
Well, normally.
Normally, that's what we do.
Yes.
Yeah, you're going to share the applicant.
Yeah.
Yeah, you'll see the draft of the decision.
Normally, we work in open session through the decision. That's our norm.
Correct.
I know that we have to kind of out of this plant to have it. They're probably, right now, we probably won't see it till June, right, Chris?
Yeah, June will likely, in early it seems.
We thought we were going to get this done a little sooner, but I, I think we've got to have some guidance from you. You're going to make a decision tonight or not, or?
Well, we have, if we make it, if we're, yeah, we're going to try to make a decision possibly. A couple of us probably feel that way. But we have to close the hearing first.
Yeah.
And we vote on it? Is that what you want to do?
Yeah.
I see no problem with it going through. I'm just, I'm talking about a normal process. That's the way I look at it. I mean, I have no problem with what you guys want to do. We have a normal process, you know, through, and I think we should adhere to it because we've gone and done, not done it that way before. And usually it doesn't work out. So I think we're better off doing the normal process. But, you know, yes, we see no problem when you're doing what you want to do.
Do Bill have any questions, Lars, I guess, while we're sitting in the room?
No, I would encourage the Board to act on the waiver request in open session.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And that'll help me draft the decision.
Correct. That's why I'm saying about going through the waivers.
Okay, before you close the public hearing.
Okay, so then if that's the case.
Walk through the waivers.
Like through the waiver list.
While we're.
We normally do.
We're going to, you want to talk it through?
Yeah, we can always do it.
We're going to read through the waivers each one.
Do this, all right? So am I reading?
No, you're not reading anything.
No.
Yeah. Okay, then go through it.
They're requesting.
Let's walk through each one.
We're requesting the waivers. An initial waiver letter was sent on, on January 5th. We revised that yesterday. So the waiver request letter dated January 25th is the one that I'll read from right now. So they start with waiver requests from section 9 dot 4 dot 4 of the bylaw. And I'll start with the number one and I'll just go straight through the letter. And a lot of these refer to site plan requirements. So section 9 dot 4 dot 4 dot 1A is a requirement for a locust plan. Basically showing, um, the property, abutting properties at a scale of one inch to 100 feet for a thousand-foot radius. And we actually include it in the site plan set. We did have a locust plan at a scale of one inch equals 200 feet just because the project site is so large. So there's a slight difference there. And to put it on one sheet, we basically didn't have enough room to show everything within a thousand feet. So we do have a locust plan. It's just not specifically to the letter of that requirement. So we're asking a waiver from that requirement. Uh, section 9 dot 4 dot 4 dot 1 dot B is a topography and drainage plan which shall contain the existing and proposed final topo and plans for handling stormwater. Uh, our site plan set on a couple of the sheets does have existing conditions topography. We are not, uh, with the exception of maybe taking away some spoil materials that are shown here, not altering the existing topography by installation of the plant. And, um, as I mentioned earlier, the removal of this concrete pad does result in the reduction of approximately 1,500 square feet of part of pervious surface. And we felt that, you know, certainly that coupled with the site in general, that our project will not, um, you know, cause any increases in rates and runoff volumes for stormwater, you know, leaving the site. So that's the waiver request for the topo and drainage plan. Section 9 dot 4 dot 4 dot 1 dot C is the utility and landscaping plan. Uh, we request a waiver from this section. As the new batch plant, really, the only utilities required will be an electric service which will come off the existing transformer and that's shown on the plan. And a water line which will come from the existing boiler, um, over near the office in the, or existing batch plant. There are no permanent personnel here. There's no occupable, occupiable space. So there's no subsurface sewage disposal system. There really are no other utilities. And, um, basically, we did look at, um, you know, certain, the location of the plant. It's really not an area that's heavily landscaped. And again, most of this area's been heavily altered. So we didn't really figure a landscaping plan was applicable to this project. Section 9 dot 4 dot 4 dot 1 dot D is an architectural plan. The batch plant basically consists of a tower, a series of conveyors and loading bins. And I think the, the engineering drawings were submitted as part of the supplemental today. I think that's about as close as we're going to come to architectural plans for this project.
Just, just one. Chris, do you know what color the, the new plant's going to be? Is it like gray like, or?
The same color as the other one, the tan.
Tan, okay. Okay, blends into the landscape and, yeah, okay, that's all. Thank you.
Uh, section 9 dot 4 dot 4 dot 1 dot E is for a landscaping plan. Uh, that was something I touched on a little bit with the previous waiver for 9 dot 4 dot 1 C. And again, requesting a waiver from the landscape plan as really the installation area for the batch plant and its, you know, kind of appendages shown here, really will be in an area that's heavily trafficked and already disturbed. That landscaping, um, is just really not part of the, this area, the gravel pit. And just to point out that the proposed gravel pit is about 400 feet or so west of the sideline of Route 146. So it's really not, it'll be visible from the street, but it's, it's really not going to be heavily seen or scrutinized by any passersby. Uh, section 9 dot 4 dot 4 dot 2 is a written statement of time to complete. We ask for a waiver from this because I think a lot of it hinges on, A, when the plant can be ordered and the delivery time. I believe the fabric, the installation should go pretty quick when it's here. We just don't know when it's going to, you know, hit the site and be ready for installation. Uh, section 9 dot 4 dot 4 dot 3, um, summary of contemplated projects. And we request a waiver from this section as this is the only project that is being contemplated at this time. Section 9 dot 4 dot 4 dot 4 drainage calculations, um, again, with a slight reduction in impervious area and really no change to existing grades or runoff patterns that, um, really the drainage calculation just wouldn't be applicable to this project. Section 9 dot 4 dot 4 dot 5 would be on and off-site impacts. Um, again, we're requesting a waiver from that as the project being the new plant won't significantly increase the number of employees. Again, we talked about one new employee. The number of trucks garage at the site and entering and exiting the site won't change. So we actually see that. The second batch plan, again, that gets a lot of its materials from the adjacent gravel pit, um, really is minimizing off-site impacts. Uh, certification of compliance, I'm sorry, section 9 dot 4 dot 4 dot 6 is certification of compliance with the ADA or the, um, Architectural Access Board requirements. Again, this isn't a public facility, um, and basically the, the area around the plant will be restricted to employees and maintenance personnel only. So we, pursuant to yesterday's review letter, we did add, expand the list of waivers and these pertain to section 5, um, of the zoning bylaws. And I'll read through these one by one as well, starting with section 5 dot 1 dot 2, which is a table of off-street parking regulations. And this will kind of apply to some of the ones that follow, basically. The project not creating any additional off-street parking demands and, you know, basically with sufficient parking being located in the vicinity of the existing plant, really one designated employee up here, we didn't see that a table of off-street parking, you know, was really applicable. And that would translate down into section 5 dot 1 dot 3, which is shared parking. You know, again, there is designated parking, you know, within the lease area and just south of the lease area. And again, some of this is shared between Pine and Delphine. But again, we're not creating any new parking demand by virtue of this project. So asking for a waiver from that. Uh, section 5 dot 1 dot 4 through 5 dot 1 dot 6, which are various parking requirements. Again, no construction or expansion of existing off-street parking spaces. So really not looking at landscaping requirements for landscape islands within parking areas, looking at parking space dimensions or loading zones, um, things like that. Section 5 dot 2 is loading requirements. Um, we do show, you know, basically for operation of the plant. Truck loading will be, um, basically under the tower, um, coming in from the east. Loading of raw materials will come from a separate designated area west of that. So again, trying to keep vehicle traffic separate. But designated loading areas are shown. Uh, they're not striped, obviously, or they're not. Maybe in strict compliance with the dimensional requirements, but they are adequate for the operation of the plant. Uh, section 5 dot 3 is landscaping requirements. And we touched on this a little bit through some of the minor site plan review waivers. But again, the location of the plant and its, its, basically its surroundings being an active gravel pit, uh, really didn't feel like landscaping was applicable, nor would landscaping thrive in this location. And with the new plant's remote location, basically in relation to abutting streets, uh, we respectfully ask for a waiver from that. And section 5 dot 4 is the last one, and that's environmental performance standards. Thinking of this project almost as an extension of what's here in the existing plant, the proposed plant. And the plants are heavily regulated by local, state, federal regulations. And Chris, maybe you can speak to these a little bit more if needed. But basically both plants will be in conformance, um, under the same permits. And I would imagine if this is a newer plant, it probably runs a little bit cleaner than the existing plant. But, you know, again, that's kind of upon the applicant to make sure the plant's functioning within the confines of, um, applicable regs.
Yeah, we're, we're currently permitted by E, E P W P A on site for air quality. That's who controls us on site. And, uh, this would just be an addition to our existing permit.
Okay.
I guess just for reference and maybe for bookkeeping, I'd just like to point out that these waivers are all cited on a letter dated January 25th, 2021, addressed to the County Douglas Planning Board. And basically, the references list of waiver requests for minor site plan review. And they were prepared by Metro West Engineering.
Thank you.
Number nine and number 10, no plans for a sign at all? And on the general comments?
That's correct. No plans for a sign.
All right.
Yeah.
And was number 10 addressed?
Number 10, uh, that was in the comment response letter to Mr. Kunde's letter. And we did talk about that a little bit, and I can expand on that a little bit. Looking at, basically, no expansion or no increase in the number of trucks that will be basically housed or garaged at the site and not a creation of any additional employees at the site. But basically, the second plan allowing the flexibility to get the trucks out to the site quicker. So again, not looking to increase employees or the number of trucks, but looking to, you know, reduce idle time and to be able to dispatch vehicles, delivery trucks more efficiently.
So what is the capacity of the number of trucks that could be served?
Well, the existing plant, uh, can basically load one truck, uh, about every six minutes. So that's about 11 cubic yards per truck. So looking at 10 trucks per hour, it's about somewhere around 110 cubic yards per hour. The new plant will essentially double that capacity and there may be a little bit of swing one way or the other where it may slightly increase over double. But, you know, looking at trying to load 21 concrete trucks, send them out the door first thing in the morning with two plants up and running, they can get out to a job site quicker. So that's really the, the.
So if there was language limiting the number of trucks, would you? I mean, you're, you're giving us the impression that it's only one additional truck.
No.
I want to say, I want to speak on this.
One second.
I know when there's a big pour, you'll actually bring in, because I know Charlie does, don't bring outside trucks. Because when you've got a pour, say a million square feet or whatever, or whatever the size might be, you need to have 50, 30 trucks lined up ready to go in a heartbeat. But it's a spur. And then there might be a gap. Like we see where I'm at in the mornings. They're like freight trucks hitting out of the store. But then all of a sudden, there's nothing. Then it goes back to come back around like round two.
And to get the intent.
And rotate them through. Then they're kind of sporadic throughout the day because now they're doing a foundation or they're doing smaller. But in the mornings, normally, they're doing the big pour.
The intent would be also to, you know, basically if you double the loading capacity, but to dispatch the trucks, you know, kind of more evenly, if you will, instead of, you know, having them all queued up.
I think Paul wants to say.
What Bill is trying to get is, he's trying to get an idea because of what's coming in and out of that driveway is what he's looking for.
Paul, do you want to answer Bill's question?
I do.
About time.
Just getting the habit of wearing, watching everybody in our offices and stuff. I was the last one to give in.
Now he's so handsome.
What, what happened when we had these big pours two years ago? It started one, two in the morning and it would go nice and smooth. And then we had some contractors that didn't want to work at night. And they tried it and they says, well, I need a truck 15 minutes apart. Okay? Well, they're only going up to Route 16 and a lot of work's going to be Route 16 and some's going to be on the other side of the road on Lackey Dam Road on Mary Maggiore. It's, it's, oh, no. The trucks, they, they get up there with the modern equipment on the job site. They use a laser round to grade the concrete. They don't use laborers. They just, okay, pull up three trucks and dump. So now the 15 minutes apart became 15 minutes. And all of a sudden, the guy wanted six trucks on the job delivery. But they're back at the plant and he's calling, you can only load them one at a time. And he's down there calling, where's my trucks? They are 15 minutes apart and there's six of them already sitting here. And it's only been a half an hour since the job started. So there will be times when you're going to load a lot of trucks. It's going to depend on what the contractors are doing, how they are to their concrete. And we still have other customers we've got to maintain because the big thing that was good for us pouring at night, we could give them a lot of attention, bring some trucks in from Bellingham, from the other plant and give them real good service. But at seven o'clock in the morning, somebody else wants concrete, you know? And now you've got to load his trucks in between too. So, and there is days when we bring in extra trucks, to be honest, right up front.
If I can chime in?
Yeah.
And just give an analogy, you know, if, if Pine Sammy Gravel has a big fill drop on tomorrow, you know, and, and and has 10 trucks and they rent 20 trucks to do the job, they might have five loaders working in the pit loading them trucks. And then for the next two weeks, they might have four loaders sitting in there. So that's kind of how I respect how this plan is. Well, I think everyone in, involved there knows there's going to be a large amount of live buildings coming in our neck of the woods. And we want to try to keep that business in town as much as possible. If we're not ready for it, the jobs are going to come and they're going to go and we're going to still be talking about it.
The, uh, but they're got, Bill's still looking for a general, you're looking for what, general number or just?
No, I mean, normally in, in these kinds of decisions, we do put parameters on, you know, what you're requesting. So I just want to be clear about what it is you're requesting.
Well, really requesting, it could change. I mean, that's a, that's a gamble. I can't put a number on how many trucks are going to go in and out because I don't know how much concrete someone's going to order tomorrow. If, if, if two of these houses are going at the same time that are proposed and each of them need a thousand yards of concrete tomorrow, I can't tell this minute how many trucks I need to do that. Like some mentioned, we bring in rental trucks. We do, we don't need all them trucks every day. However, there are days that we rent trucks to other companies and we rent trucks from other companies and work together to get these jobs done. And with the amount of work coming close by, it's inevitable that some of these pours are going to happen at the same time. And they're all going to trickle, a lot of them on Lackey Dam Road, whether they're coming out of our location or coming from an outside supplier and driving down the same road to get the work. So putting a number on how many trucks a day, like, you know, I. It's so much. Tomorrow we might do 10 yards, the next day we might do 500. It's a, we don't know, but we're doing a lot of days. It's, it's hard to guess how many trucks. You know, the phone rings and generally we try to take every order that comes in the door. And then you sit back at five o'clock at night and say, how the hell are we doing this?
So, so are you suggesting that it's, Bill, can we put variable? I mean, can we just put? I mean, is it, you have to fill a number?
Yeah, we don't have to address it.
And let's not address it. They've got to do their businesses. They've got to do their business, you know?
Yeah.
I'm just saying, I brought it up.
Right, right, right. But I think it's, they've got to do their business.
If you're doing a thousand yards, that's 100 loads.
Okay, well, it's.
Okay.
Basically, it's 100 loads of concrete.
I don't want to see it. I know what it's like.
You know? Yeah, that's, that's what you're talking about. So if you have two of these jobs going on a particular day, hopefully they don't all want to do a thousand yards. hopefully, they don't all want to do 1,000 yachts.
And you've got to get there while the slots go good coming out of the.
Right.
That's right.
And then the other thing it's going to give us is a little backup, because we've had the power go out in Bellingham when we were doing a big pour down there a couple of years ago. And we didn't lose a beat, but we had off 30 trucks that we owned that day, hauling from Douglas to Bellingham, because the power went out at 7:00 in the morning, didn't come back until noon time. The pour was all done. They didn't even know we lost power. And we were sitting there doing nothing, watching it.
All right.
Paul, do you have anything else?
No.
Bill?
Chris is the applicant. I guess you want us to.
Well, can I ask Jake for a second? Jake, do you have any other questions or comments? Unmute or something?
No, I have no issue with any of the waivers. Pretty much consistent with how the business is being run now. And I want to keep that concrete business in town, keep them going, and do what they can, do what we can to help them. That's what I have on the waivers. I have no issues with the waivers. And I wouldn't want to restrict the, put a number on the trucks either. Don't want to hold them up and restrict their business when they don't really know exactly how many trucks really there are or could possibly be.
Yeah. Fair enough.
You want something? Okay. Want to entertain a motion?
Well, I don't know.
So.
One of my rare motions. You're going to?
I think he wants.
What?
Well, he wants to do a motion before we close.
The motion, so I need a motion on the waiver request list. From January 25th, 2021. As presented.
Yeah.
So we'll keep the public hearing open.
We're right now.
So what we're going to do is we're going to make a motion to accept the waivers as written on the line ahead of January 25th, 2021. Is sufficient?
Motion's made by Mike Z.
Second.
Second by Aaron. Roll call.
Les Stevens eye.
Mike Greco eye.
Aaron Sokrata eye.
Mike Sokrata.
Jake Scholzberg eye.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
So we want to keep going, want to close it?
Yeah.
Motion to close the public hearing.
I'll suck in that.
Made by Mike Z.
I'll suck.
Seconded by Les. Roll call vote.
Les Stevens eye.
Mike Greco eye.
Aaron Sokrata eye.
Mike Sokrata.
Jake Scholzberg eye.
Thank you.
Want to keep going?
Yeah.
We'll make a motion to accept the site plan review with the waivers as presented for Delphine's concrete on 1 Lackey Dam Road.
Motion.
For the site plan review.
Motion's made by Mike Z.
Second.
Second by Mike G. Roll call.
Les Stevens eye.
Mike Greco eye.
Aaron Sokrata eye.
Mike Sokrata.
Jake Scholzberg eye.
Thank you. Okay. All set. Thank you very much. Thanks, you too.
Thank you.
Good night.
Chris, do we have anything else?
No.
We ready to roll?
Question two.
And Alex, entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion for a job.
Motion's made by Mike Z.
Second.
Second by Les. Roll call vote.
Les Stevens eye.
Mike Greco eye.
Aaron Sokrata eye.
Mike Sokrata.
Jake Scholzberg eye.
Thank you.